Welcome everyone, today is Tuesday, December 29th, I mean December 9th, 2025. We'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation.
(Inaudible) United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in prayer. Heavenly Father, come to you today and just thanking you for the millions and millions of things that you do every day to keep us safe, to keep us happy, to make us love and get along and understand one another. As we go into this holiday season, I just pray that you watch over everyone's family and most, like most of all, those ones who aren't as fortunate as some others. I pray that you will watch over the Hamilton family as they've had a rough go here the last couple of weeks and keep Brother Fred in your sights and your hand on his head. So these things and all, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, we go now to the adoption of the minute. Do you have managers or any changes?
No sir, none from staff unless counsel has any.
You hear a motion? Let's move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Next, we have presentation celebrations and recognition. Guess you got all that over there. Okay. So this is the...
The State of Mind Award.
Oh, the State of Mind Award. We have Palmetto Pediatrics. We have anyone from... So is this Tia?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Where's Ashley?
She's, I think, stuck in traffic.
Okay, Palmetto Pediatrics has six board certified providers caring for families across the region. Palmetto Pediatrics has been serving the Low Countries since 2022. So why don't you tell them everything else that you guys do?
Oh, yep, and Dr. Albert. We got one more too. Y'all want to come up here?
Sure. Can't get this unless you tell everybody why you're getting it.
Exactly.
Hi.
What do we do at Palmetto Pediatrics?
That's what we wanted to know.
Care for all the children in this community.
And all the little ones?
Yep.
And the big ones.
And the big ones, yeah.
I know mine come up here to see you guys. So I guess you keep them smiling, keep them out of pain, keep them healthy.
Most of the time, yeah. When we're not doing so.
So how do you make them not scream and holler when you're working on it?
We try to bribe them with Band-Aids and Molotovs.
Oh, I thought it was laughing.
Not that extreme.
So this is yours, whoever's, who wants it?
Oh, doesn't matter, group effort.
Congratulations, you guys did a great job, and thank you.
All right, you ready? One, two, three. And if you don't mind saying for a group photo at the end.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have the best float, Outdoor Empire. Joe Junior? Come on up. Congratulations. Outdoor Empire is a locally owned and operated full-service residential and commercial landscaping company. Outdoor Empire has been in business since 2022. Located on May River Road, services such as pavers, pine straw, concrete, irrigation, forestry, mulching, and lawn maintenance are offered. So would you like to add a little more about what you guys do?
I mean, we pretty much like to do everything outdoors, so we're going to be adding a little bit more to those services, you know, year by year.
Great, great, well, congratulations.
Sure, thank you.
One, two, three. I think I got it. I got it. If you don't mind saying for a group, fine.
Up next, we have best performance. May River High School Winter Cheer Team. Okay. The May River Winter Cheer Team is made up of students in grades nine through 12. These athletes put in approximately 12 and a half hours of practice each week from November to February. You can catch them in action at the May River High School basketball games cheering on both the girls and the boys teams. So, I'm gonna walk over here and I think maybe y'all could do a little cheer for everybody? Tell if you have, that's part of the deal, just a little.
If I can do it? I'll see if I can spread out that.
That was saying my deal.
MRS, we are the best! Go MRS! Go MRS! Go MRS! MRS, we are the best! Don't mess with us! Don't mess with us! Don't mess with us, don't act like you don't know our names!
Two, three.
Sharks!
Great job. So let's go hold this, we got a picture. All of us?
Airball and a muddy ball, yeah.
You want to hold it, that's fine.
All right, you ready? One, two...
One, two, three.
Yes. Can I get every, all the other winners?
Lisa was up here, she'd be cheered with y'all. You want to try?
Anywhere you can stand. All right, you ready? One, two, three.
Okay, up next, we have a student of the month, Serene Nada. If I said that right? Is she here? Oh, here you go. She's 12th grade from Bluffton High School with a trait of courage and tolerance. That's Bahad. Great, I'm good, good to see you. So tell us where...
So she was, apologize if she's not here, the family was hoping they would be able to join us tonight, but they had something come up. But, Serene was a student, she's receiving us for courage and tolerance, as Mayor Tumer said. Story is, she arrived here last year with her family and has had to take on the challenge of learning a brand new language. And she tackled and showed great perseverance and courage in taking on everything that that challenge was placed in front of her. And she has stepped up and started supporting our new show program. She's supporting other students in her classes with language acquisition. So not only has she learned a new language coming into our country, but she's starting to embody everything that Bluffton is, Bluffton High is, being a Bobcat. And taking advantage of everything that this new opportunity coming to our country is affording her and her family. So she was a great, great student to select. And as always, I just want to thank the town for spending some time to make sure that they acknowledge the wonderful students here in Bluffton. So thank you very much, and again, on behalf of the family, they are very, very appreciative of you recognizing their daughter.
Great, we're proud to do it. You were doing a great job as well.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all know the Bobcat. You waited until the cheerleaders left. Okay, up next, we have... Don Ryan Center? Mr. Paul, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, take it away.
I didn't know I was gonna have to follow the cheer team.
Paul, you gotta do a little cheer first.
I was gonna have to stay and do the DRCI cheer, but...
So thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to be here tonight to report to you on the Don Ryan Center to discuss some of our past and current accomplishments and where we're headed. So a little bit of the past, present, and future. So 13 years in existence, since 2012. We've worked with a total of 105 different companies in our formal programs, assisted an additional 628 companies. Eighty-four percent of the companies that we have worked with in our programs are still in existence today, which is a really proud number. Close to $30 million in gross revenue, and through the Economic Development Incentive Program that the town is providing, another $39 million of economic investment, creation of 160 new jobs with an average salary of $75,000. So this slide represents the 105 companies that we've worked with in our program. The orange represents new companies that have entered into the Don Ryan Center programs each year. The orange and blue combined represents the total number of companies we work with, we've worked with in each year. So the Don Ryan Center was started with the future in mind, how to support local businesses as Bluffton has grown. And as you can see, we have gained significant momentum and impact in the most recent years, producing our largest number of participants in our programs. Currently, we have 20 companies in our formal programs, the most ever. As Bluffton has grown, so has the Don Ryan Center and their ability to assist more businesses. As Bluffton has grown, so has the Don Ryan Center and their ability to assist more businesses. Beyond our formal programs, we're always available to help any companies in need with questions, referrals, or assistance, providing advice, direction, and support to those companies, whether they walk in, make a phone call, or set a formal appointment with us, we're always there to help. We're trying to help and have an impact on as many businesses in our community as possible. There are some key metrics that we keep track of. Seventy-six percent of the businesses that we've worked with over the past year were Bluffton-based businesses. Half of those businesses were women and minority-owned businesses. Our mentor network currently has 57 mentors in it, and more than half of those mentors have worked with businesses in this past year. We have completed 10 A I-specific presentations over the past year with over 500 attendees. Really like to focus on the bottom of the slide, it's really an impressive slide, expressive numbers. D R-supported companies significantly outperform national averages. The U.S. national average for a company after one year is only 80% survival rate. With the Don Ryan Center, it's 100%. After five years, the U.S. national average drops to only 50% of those companies are still in business. Companies that have worked with us, 90% of those companies are still in business. Ten years, even better, 35% national average survival rate, 86% of the companies we've worked with are still in business today. So I just want to highlight a couple of our recent and ongoing success stories. Here are two examples, two companies that we're currently working with, Part of the Family Dometic Care Services and A M A Private Dining. They are representative of the many new and current program customers we work with. They both joined the Don Ryan Center as startup companies, as solo entrepreneurs, meaning it was just them, themselves, looking to create a business and grow in Bluffton. Since joining, both companies have grown, created job opportunities, added multiple employees to their businesses. Just these two small companies have added 10 new jobs in the past year. Both are continuing to work with us moving into our growth programs, working on opening physical locations in Bluffton, creating more job opportunities and economic impact. The future, as we've all heard, is about A I, and we plan to stay at the forefront of that when it comes to the businesses of Bluffton. The Don Ryan Center, we want to help educate business owners on how to utilize this tool to improve and grow their businesses. We will offer online education in the coming year through our partnership with Furman University and the Z School, as well as provide hands-on, in-person training, and we're very excited about the new conference room and training space in the new building, which will allow us to do even more. We want to be the leader in A I-business education throughout the region. So we are also focused on the future generation of workers, leaders, and business entrepreneurs in this area. We've been doing work with the Hilton Head Christian Academy on their entrepreneurship program, providing onsite education, as well as a Shark Tank experience at the Don Ryan Center annually. I know some of you have participated in that. Students get the opportunity to examine entrepreneurship as a career, and present their businesses, get live feedback from a panel of experienced entrepreneurs and staff. Recently, we were approached by the Beaufort County School District and Bluffton High School as our newest educational partnership. Bluffton High was chosen as a pilot program in the state of South Carolina for a new A I. educational program for students in computer science, helping students to get ready for the future by giving them the skills they will need to succeed in a new A I-driven world. We are very excited and appreciative of the new Cove building. This will provide us with landing pad space to attract new businesses from outside of Bluffton, to explore Bluffton as a future home for their business, whether they are an existing business or a new business looking to start up in Bluffton. Gives us great opportunity to attract businesses to this area. In addition, the first floor will house new, new startup businesses. Currently, we have the Bright Beginnings Academy for childcare, which is scheduled to open the day the building opens. They are ready, they've been working with us in our startup program for the past six months. They are ready to go, they are completely full. The day they are open, they will be full, and they'll have a waitlist of two to three times the capacity. It just shows the need and the town's support behind that need. The second floor will have additional space for the Don Ryan Center, the landing pad offices, as I mentioned, a large conference room and training center, and additional offices for our economic development partners. In addition to that, I mentioned, we're doing the A I. education, we'll be able to perform a lot of that in person at our new, at the new spot there. We're going to be launching a new website in 2026, which is very business-focused, modern, interactive, it'll allow us to do the online educational piece I mentioned, and we're always looking for ways to improve our programs, add additional programs, so that we can remain on the cutting edge of business advisement. Thank you.
Questions from council?
I would like to make an observation. The, the chart that you put up there with the duration of years for the...
Yes.
No, you just passed it. Well, this one, when you started with this one, before I knew you were getting to the other one, I was gonna say, tell us what happens from zero to five, because a lot of companies, as most of us know, startups, don't make it past the fifth year. You went to the other slide, I think that's just, I don't even have it complimented well enough, I think that's phenomenal, that you have that kind of record going for you right now.
I appreciate that, and you, we put a lot of effort in, the company's put a lot of effort in, and I think it shows that having advisement as these companies work through the startup process is a key for them to have long-term success. And our goal is to see these businesses in Bluffton succeed for a long time. Nobody wants to see businesses coming and closing, we want to see them be here long-term and grow as the town grows.
Thank you, Paul.
Anything from anyone else?
Thank you, great job, Paul.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I appreciate it.
Up next, we have public comment. Everyone will pay attention and listen to our guideline.
During public comment, each speaker is limited to a total of three minutes per meeting, regardless of whether the person is speaking on their own behalf or as an agent for others. Meeting attendees may not donate, transfer, yield, or give all or any portion of their speaking time to another person. All public comments are to be conducted from the podium and directed to the town council as a whole, and not to any member thereof. All speakers shall be mindful and respectful of those participating in or present at the meeting. Speakers shall be expected to be civil in their language, and shall refrain from comment or behavior that involves disorderly speech or action, name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene or indecent remarks, and/or disruptive actions. All speakers shall confine their comments to issues under the jurisdiction of the town council. Speakers shall not use the public comment period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, goods, or candidates for public office. Any speaker that violates these rules and protocols for public comment may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer. Any person whose comments have been ruled out of order shall immediately cease and desist from further improper comments. The refusal of an individual to desist from further improper comments may subject the individual to removal from the meeting and/or a citation under section 2-49 of the Town Code.
Okay, did everybody hear that? Up first, we'll have John Bartolo, Bartola. John, if you will, just state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is John Bartolo, I live at 194 Pine Crest Circle in Pine Crest, I'm a resident of the town of Bluffton. The purpose of my talk tonight is to, again, bring up the subject of the proposed redevelopment of the Pine Crest Golf Course, adding additional housing, a proposal that the owner has put on the table for us and asked us to support, even though he hasn't yet made a formal presentation to any governmental authorities, is my understanding. I moved here about two years ago from upstate New York, I've been vacationing in Hilton Head for 35 years with our family, fell in love with the area, always said, this is where we're gonna end up when I retire, and my wife and I moved down a couple of years ago. I've watched the development in Bluffton with, over those years, with just total amazement, as it has grown out, from the bridge out, and I know that there are some long-timers down here who have a bit of regret over that, because they miss the serenity of earlier days. But I think, you know, I've found that the charm in the lifestyle of the Low Country and this area is just, makes it almost an inevitable draw as we see the expansion going westward. The challenge, as I see it, this challenge, is, again, just a challenge of the leadership of this community that I'm looking at, managing the development of growth, how to provide the right housing and commercial development without, and supporting the needs of the community without increasing the density to a point where it disrupts what I call the key issue here, which is quality of life. I've heard you mention that before in presentations, I go to a lot of the meetings, quality of life is what it's all about, and that's really what we're addressing in our objection to this proposal. We, we moved into Pine Crest because it appeared to be a safe, mature, environmentally friendly, fully-developed community, with streets, access roads, well-planned, a master plan that was well-thought-out by everyone that was involved in the process of that development. And the feeling that I get from our neighbors is, you know, the investment, that they felt safe in the investment, as I did, in our homes, and that the investment and lifestyle would be preserved, because it was a mature, developed property. This disruptive proposal has been put on the table, increases the number of households by 74%. It's not part of the master plan, they don't have the zoning or the units to do it, but that's what they're proposing. Seventy-four percent on the same footprint.
You almost done, sir, because your three minutes is up.
Already? I guess what I would say is this boils down to the quality of life. I've heard a very important person say recently that we live in the town of Bluffton, and not, it'll never be the city of Bluffton, and to that, I say, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Sulka. State your name and let us know if you live in the town.
Lisa Sulka, 37 Stock Farm Road, in the historic district of the town of Bluffton. And I'll read it, so I'll stay on time. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak again tonight as an update of what I talked about at the last public comment at your strategic planning retreat, on the importance of protecting Bluffton's history. Since then, I've connected with those who are passionately committed to the future and the past of historic Bluffton. Over the past several weeks, I have met and spoken with leaders from Historic Bluffton Foundation, Save the Shudders, the Town, thank you, Mr. Sties, Community Foundation of the Low Country, Rise with Living Hope, Paul Tollifson, and a dozen more private citizens. We share a common perspective. If we continue losing contributing resources, we are also losing the families, the craftsmanship, and the memories that tell the story of how Bluffton began. These partners see what we all see, aging historic homes, limited options for homeowners, and increasing pressure to replace rather than restore. The good news is there is a genuine interest in working together, we align a mission, and we want to build a coordinated preservation effort. I still have more groups and individuals to meet with, including some of you, but so far, there is strong support for expanding preservation education and advocacy, collaborating on recommended U D O. updates for contributing resources, identifying funding pathways, providing volunteer support for homeowners with financial need, and increasing public awareness through social media and community presentations. This momentum is real, now we need alignment with our own town's long-term preservation vision. How will we protect the contributions of all of our families who were and are a major part of the establishment of this town, especially Black families who built homes and businesses from Bridge Street to Hayward Street, down May River Road, Calhoun and Church Street, families like the Browns, the Bruins, the Garvins, the Alstons, the Joiners, and others whose stewardship also helped preserve Bluffton that we cherish today, including the Heywards, the Mingle Dorfs, members of Campbell A M E. Church, the Wonders, the Town, Ma Daisy's, owners of the Nathaniel Brown Cottage, and owners of the Red Dot, to name a few. I'm not asking the Town to take this on alone, but to work with these organizations and with residents to create a clear preservation strategy that values our contributing resources, accounts for what we have already lost, and sets a strong intentional path forward, so we do not lose anymore. We have partners ready to help, we have residents who deeply care. Now we need the shared commitment from the Town to make preservation an active part of Bluffton's long-term historic vision. Thank you for your time, always for your service, you have outdone yourself on the lighting of this town for Christmas, and I want to thank Town, but I want to thank y'all too.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Up next, we have Mr. Charlie Wetmore.
Good evening, Charlie Wetmore, 48 Lawrence Street here in Old Town. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm speaking tonight as both Chair of Planning Commission, and then after as a longtime resident of Bluffton, currently living in Old Town. First, as Planning Commission Chair, I want to clarify the origin of Planning Commission's recommendation regarding the proposed carport classification. During our public meeting, the motion to remove the percentage of lot coverage requirement was made by a former town staff member who now serves on the commission. The full commission then considered that motion and voted unanimously to support it. I believe it's important for council to understand that this recommendation arose from open discussion at the meeting, it was not arbitrary or unilateral departure from the intent of the U D O. Second, and tonight, more importantly to me, I want to speak from the perspective of someone who's lived in Bluffton for many years, not as many as most of you up there, if not all of you. We can agree that we care deeply about what makes this town special. I'm increasingly concerned that the U D O, piece by piece, is removing the quirkiness, flexibility, and individuality that originally drew so many of us to Bluffton. We are risking becoming a community shaped more by uniformity and real estate maximization than by the organic eclectic character that built Bluffton's reputation as a state of mind. When the U D O. was enacted, something significant happened almost overnight. Homes that defined Bluffton's charm became non-conforming. That includes the former mayor's home, the current mayor's home, Councilman Wood's home, possibly others up there, along with my own home. These are not fringe properties, they are central examples of Bluffton's historic and architectural character. They may not be as old as some of the contributing structures, but they have contributed to what Bluffton is. Yet, under current regulations, if any of these homes were destroyed, they could not be rebuilt as they exist today. That should give all of us some pause. The cumulative effect of continual tightening and reclassification within the U D O. is that Bluffton is slowly being reshaped into something more rigid, something that looks less like the town we fell in love with, and more like a standardized development. Protecting safety and consistency is important, but so is protecting identity, history, and uniqueness. I urge council to consider, not only the specific carport amendment before you tonight, but the larger pattern. We need a U D O. that guides growth without erasing character, and one that doesn't render the very homes of our leaders, long-term residents, and historic neighborhoods impossible to rebuild. Thank you for your time and for your ongoing work on behalf of the community. Thank you, each and every one of you tonight.
Thank you, Charlie, and your, your timing was absolutely perfect. Up next, we have Tony Presley.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and staff. I'm here today to talk about a reoccurring...
Get your name.
Oh, sorry, Tony Presley, 68 Pritchett Street, here in Old Town. I'm here to talk about a reoccurring issue that I'm sure all of us have been a part of. of, and it's e-bikes. A few of the issues that I've witnessed over the past couple of months: riding through Martin's Park, riding through Shrimp Boat Park where kids are playing, blowing through stop signs without any regard of pedestrians or vehicles, tailgating cars. I had one behind me the other day that I could not even see. If I hadn't put my camera on, I would have backed up and hit them. Passing cars on roads such as Pritchard, Calhoun, Bruin, as well as Bridge Street. Going around the curb. Some of these bikes can go up to 50 miles an hour. I don't know if any of y'all knew that. My fear is someone is going to be seriously hurt, and this will affect all families involved, not just the family of the e-bike, and it could affect the community as well. The Town has taken precautions to protect their golf cart community, and I ask that you take the same precautions to protect the e-bike and their families as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Up next, we have communications from Mayor and Council. We'll start with Ms. Frazier.
Just wanted to offer condolences again to Councilman Hamilton. It's good to see him here tonight on the loss of his sister. And job well done to Town staff on another amazing Christmas parade, even on the rain dampened it a little bit. And, yeah, wishing everyone a great and happy holidays.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you. So if you like the lights that are up when you drive down May River Road, would you raise your hand? And look around the room real quick, okay? It's Mayberry, okay? Small-town feel, and government workers, a lot of times, they're not given the credit they deserve. Larry, stand up. This is the gentleman that runs the crews to get those lights up.
Lindy, stand up, please.
Lindy's the pit boss that helps put on the Christmas parades, even in the rain, and all of the staff give all their effort every year to make this place look magical, and they do a fabulous job. And it's to not only do that, it's intentional, is to make everybody in this room feel good about why they live in Bluffton. And I go nuts when I see it. And I just want to end that on a positive note. It is the holidays. I wish everybody here a Merry Christmas. I want you to keep in mind it's about peace, love, harmony, and one of the most important things besides love is forgiveness. So let's take this and make it a perfect time of the holiday season for us, and I ask everybody here, there are great nonprofits in the town of Bluffton, many of them. You could not have a great community like we have in Bluffton without those nonprofits. So I encourage everybody to lift somebody up somewhere, somehow. Please, enjoy your holidays. Thank you.
Mayberry. Stand up, chief.
That's Andy.
Barney.
That's Barney.
Well, I can't follow any of that, so.
No, not definitely.
Right, you're not? I thought you were done.
Again, I want to thank everyone for all that you did and for my family doing this trying time, but I also want to wish you all a Merry Christmas as well. This is a great town to be in, and because of you, we have probably some of the best neighbors in the world. So continue to love, continue to share, and it is a season of love, peace, and joy. Thank you.
Ms. Frazier.
Well, I echo everything everybody said to Lindy and Larry and all of Town staff. Y'all did an amazing job with the cold and the rain for the Christmas parade, and we thank you very much for all of the hard work, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Kind of hard to follow up on all those nice, sweet things, but I wish everyone the same. I would do want to mention I've had the opportunity twice in the last four days to come on, not by choice, but on May River Road from Jasper County line, come by the park at New Riverside. And if you think it's pretty cool around here, you got to ride by there at night, too, because from what I could see, it was beautiful. I meant to tell Larry that it looked like some of the lights on the west end of the fence might have not been working last night when I came through there, but the decorations and the efforts aren't just here in Old Town. We're spreading them out, and again, you guys are doing an amazing job, Larry and Lindy. I know you had lots of elves helping you. I saw Marcia working at the Christmas parade, along with a lot of other people. So I'm just saying, thank you. Let's keep up the good work, and remember, the only word I didn't hear a while ago from everyone with the love, peace, and joy is respect. We can be a little different and still respect one another, whether it's our opinions or our color of our trucks. It doesn't matter. Just keep that love and respect in your mind forefront, and God bless you all.
Mayor, following up on what Councilman Wood just said, I don't know whether it's made it out because we don't have local news sources the way we used to, but the Deepwell Project that has been here forever and has helped so many people in the Low Country was named the National Charity of the Year by the PGA Tour last week, which is about the third time that we've had a local charity be honored by the PGA Tour here in our Low Country. So that was, it speaks well for our community, how well we support Deepwell and how much Deepwell does for our community. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have formal agenda item number one, acceptance of the presentation of the Town of Bluffton Fiscal Year 2025 Audit by Malden &amp; Jenkins LLC, and that will be Ms. Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I introduce my name, I just want to take a moment to recognize the efforts of the accounting and risk manager, Stephen Pucko, and the finance team to get this to where it is to present to you tonight. And I'd like to introduce Kirk with Malden &amp; Jenkins.
Three minutes, sir. No, I'm just kidding. Good evening, everyone. I've got some good news for you with your audits. Always good to present good news rather than bad news.
Hello?
Okay, hello. So we've got some good news with your audits tonight, and happy to present that information to you. As an auditor, my name's Kirk Arch. I'm with Malden &amp; Jenkins. We're the CPA firm that you all employ to do your external financial statement audit. I've got a short slideshow here. The first thing, we'll kind of go over just a short introduction of the firm, go over the auditors' reports, which is the main report, the compliance reports, and then a couple of financial statement highlights, and then I'll go over some required communications and take any questions. So we've got a graph here. Although we are a full-service firm, unlike many firms, we offer a, we have a very dedicated group of people within the firm that specialize full-time in serving governments, governmental accounting, and the audits that you all require, and the other services that you all require, quite unique and different from the private sector. We're proud to have a dedicated team to serve you all, and believe it allows us to bring a high level of service to you all at a reasonable cost. So there are three opinions that are contained in the audit report. The first one is the actual audit opinion, and the one thing I'd like to point out before we get into that is what the Town's role is as it relates to the audit, what our role is as your auditor. So the Town's role is they are responsible for the financial statements and all the underlying information that are contained there in that document. Our role as your auditors is to express an opinion as to whether or not the financial statements are materially stated based on the results of our audit procedures. When we do our audits, we follow generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards that we have here in the U.S. So I'm happy to report this year, we'll be issuing an unmodified or clean opinion. That means that we did not see, means based on our audit procedures, we believe that the statements are materially stated, and there are no material omissions. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give you as your external auditor. You know, congratulations on getting a great opinion. Moving on to the compliance reports, there'll be two compliance reports that are part of the package. One is the Report on Internal Controls and Compliance with Laws and Regulations. The second is the Single Audit Report. The yellow book report, the first one I mentioned, is a kind of, if you see something, say something with regard to internal controls in the finance department. We issued a clean opinion on that. That means we did not see anything we felt necessary to report to you all, and again, that's kind of the best-case scenario you can have with that type of audit. The third report, the final one that we'll issue, is the Single Audit Report, and it basically looks specifically at your federal programs to make sure that the guidelines of the grants were followed, that the money was spent where it should be, that kind of thing. We'll also be issuing a clean opinion on that. So three clean opinions all around. It really doesn't get any better than that. So, you know, hats off to your finance team for doing a great job so that you all can get those clean opinions. You all do the annual financial comprehensive report each year and submit that to the Georgia Finance Officers Association, and each year for the past 17 years, you all have been awarded a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. The 2024 certificate will be included in this year's financial report, and once the report's completed this year, it will be submitted for that same certificate program. That's an excellent achievement for you all. Hats off to y'all for that. This report contains a lot of extras that aren't really required to be reported. There's 10 years' worth of statistical information. There's a management narrative in the form of a transmittal letter, as well as a management discussion and analysis. So just like to, you know, point out that y'all are going above and beyond as far as your financial reporting is concerned. We've got some quick little highlights of your general fund, and I focus on the general fund mainly because that's your primary operating fund. Overall, you all had a great year. We ended the year with $65.3 million in assets, offset by $23 million in liabilities, leaving you all with a fund balance, or what a lot of people call equity, $42.3 million, with $27.4 of that being unassigned, and the unassigned means that it's not earmarked for things like debt service or specific projects to be spent on everyday expenditures. So really strong there. We had in total about $34.4 million in revenues, offset by $27.7 in expenditures with our million and a half of transfers. Overall, we had an increase in fund balance or an increase in equity, about $8.2 million. That's an excellent place to be. Padding up the fund balance is always a good thing. I have two little kind of measures down there we like to look at at the bottom. The first one is months of expenditures and unassigned fund balance, and this basically is, you know, if the door's closed at the date of this financial statement, how long you could operate without any further funding. And so you all will be able to go about 11.8 months, almost a year, which is an excellent spot to be. Anything over about four months for a June 30 year-end is good, and everything on top of that is just, you know, just a little extra. So great there. Liquid ratio, that's current assets over current liabilities. Anything over one to one's usually pretty good. So you all are nearly at three to one, which is a great place. Overall, you all had a great year. The general fund is in excellent condition, and I'll just continue to pad up fund balance. Uh-oh. Can we go back? I don't know what I did here. All right, back to it. So I included a graph here that's got, you know, revenues there in the blue, expenditures in the green, and fund balance there, or equity in the gray. And I kind of included this graph just to show that you all have not only had good financial performance in the past, but have continued to add on that year-over-year for the past few years. Obviously, expenses everywhere you look are increasing. We know that at home, as well as, you know, as you all do acquisitions for the Town, but your revenues have outpaced the, your revenue growth has outpaced the growth in expenditures over the years, and you continue to add to your fund balance position. So that's a really great place. You know, hats off to you all and the management team for having a good year. All right, we'll see if we can get through without any other difficulties. There are some required communications. I went over the opinions with you all earlier. They're all clean, best-case scenario on all those. We didn't have any audit findings. We didn't have any management points. That's as good as it gets in these financial statement audits, so again, congratulations. There are a number of things contained in the financial statements that management's responsible for, such as your accounting policies, the judgments of accounting estimates and disclosures. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We didn't have any difficulties working with management. We also did not have any uncorrected misstatements, and as your auditor, we are independent of the Town, which is what allows us to be able to do these types of audits. Just one final thing before I wrap up here. We do offer free continuing education to all of our clients. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board continues to produce new standards for us to follow and adopt, and we hope through the CPE, we can help guide the finance group through implementation of these standards and continue compliance. So we always just like to highlight that. With that, I will just leave it with this, been an opportunity, or it's been a pleasure to present to you all tonight, and we really appreciate working with particularly Natalie and Stephen to get the audit done. They're a pleasure to work with, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve you and hope to work with you all going forward.
Thank you. Questions from council? Ms. Frazier?
I just want to say thank you and congratulations to Chris, Natalie, and the whole finance team to get this grade of a writing. Thank you for all the easier.
Mr. Fred?
No, you can't have none. This is, um, this is also what we feel like we give back to our citizens, that we are the stewardship of your money, that you, most of you are here tonight to see that our staff has put in the work and our Town manager as well to make sure that we have your best interests at heart at all times, and this is, having a report like this also gives me some pleasure, and I want to thank everyone who's, including council, to make sure that we serve with integrity and dignity. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Ditto, Mr. Hamilton, and a few more years you keep at it, Natalie, and you, too, can have an orange jacket.
Good job, Eric. Ms. Frazier?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to everyone. I'm very, very impressed and very proud to be a part of this organization, that being a businessperson, these numbers are just a lot bigger, but I know how important it is to have those reserves and things that are in place here. So just take my hat off to all of everybody, Chris, and Natalie, and everyone involved, and just very proud and keep up the good work, and thank you for your services, sir.
Thank you. So we have to vote?
Yeah, there's a motion.
So any discussion, council, before someone makes a motion to accept this? Would someone like to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion. I may to accept the fiscal year 2025 audit for the town of Bluffton presented by Malden &amp; Jenkins LLC in its inclusion in the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great job. Up next, we have consideration of accommodation tax advisory committee funding recommendations for quarter ending September 30, 2025. Shannon Milroy, Budget and Procurement Management.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Shannon Milroy from the Town's Finance Department.
Yeah, I can't hear you too.
I'm here to present the accommodations tax grant applications that were received last quarter that ended September 30. We received five applications totaling just over $145,500. Of those five, one was a new applicant. We have just over $258,000 available for distribution, and that's after we've made our standard allocations by state regulations to our DMO to housing, and that includes adding some lapse grants back into that available balance. Here's a snapshot of the average scoring from our ATAC Committee for each of the applicants this quarter. And our first one, which is Congregation Beth Young, is applying for the 2025 Hanukkah Celebration that will be held on December 21 at.
and Jenkins LLC in its inclusion in the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June thirtieth, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great job. Next, we have consideration of accommodation tax advisory committee funding recommenda- recommendations for quarter ending September thirtieth, 2025. Shannon Milroy, Budget and Procurement Management.
Good evening, Mayor. Shannon Milroy from the Town's Finance Department.
Yeah, I can't hear you too.
I'm here to present the accommodations tax grant applications that were received last quarter that ended September thirtieth. We received five applications totaling just over one hundred forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Of those five, one was a new applicant. We have just over two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars available for distribution, and that's after we've made our standard allocations by state regulations to our DMO to housing, and that includes adding some lapse grants back into that available balance. Here's a snapshot of the average scoring from our ATAC committee for each of the applicants this quarter. Our first one, which is congregation Bethyam, is applying for the 2025 Hanukkah celebration that will be held on December twenty-first at Martin Family Park, and requesting seven thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and twenty-five cents.
Can you go back to the previous screen, please? Okay, so we need to vote on each one of these individually, correct? So do we have a motion or any conversation or with council? Anybody got any questions or anything? Speed now.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, if you allow.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the seven thousand seven seventy twenty-five and twenty-five cents grant to congregation Bethyam in support of the 2025 Hanukkah celebration in Bluffton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor, say aye. 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 That's unanimous. Thank you. We can move on to the next one.
Our next one is the Farmers Market of Bluffton, who is requesting sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the calendar year 2026 market season that will run from January eighth through December seventeenth.
Questions from council, concerns? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion. I move to approve a sixty-six thousand five hundred dollar grant to the Farmers Market of Bluffton in support of the 2026 market season.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor, say aye. 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 That's unanimous.
Our next one is our one, first time applicant this quarter. It's the Hilton Head Coral Society. They are celebrating their fiftieth anniversary and are bringing the Vienna Boys Choir to Bluffton to perform two concerts in February of 2026. Those concerts will be held, I believe, on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of February, and will be held at the Low Country Community Church on Buckwalter.
Any concerns? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion. I move to approve a ten thousand dollar grant to the Hilton Head Coral Society in support of the Vienna Boys Choir concerts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Unanimous. This is exciting. Looking forward.
Our next one is the New Bluffton Worship, requesting eleven thousand five hundred dollars for the 2025 Christmas Eve Under the Stars event, which will be held on Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth, at Oyster Factory Park.
Any questions on this? Not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I move to approve eleven thousand five hundred dollar grant to the New Bluffton Worship in support of the 2025 Christmas Eve Under the Stars event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That's unanimous.
And our fifth and final one is the May River Theater, who's requesting forty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for their 2026 performance season, which includes three musicals and two plays.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve forty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars grant to the May River Theater in support of their 2026 performance season.
A second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We got that taken care of pretty quick. Okay, next is number three, approval to authorize a construction contract with Hilton Head Landscapes LLC for site development, construction of Buckwalter Place, phases three and four. Physical impact is one million seventy-one thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you. Morning, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about Buckwalter Place Park. We sent to you a master plan back in 2024, which you all approved, and we've been working on initial phases of that over the last year, and now we're getting ready to do the final two phases. Uh, you know, Buckwalter Place Park is formerly known as Evercore Park. It's located out of Buckwalter Place between Innovation Drive and Care Core Drive. This is the work that we've completed in phase one and two last year, which included a restroom expansion. We expanded it, we tripled the size of that building. We, we added some pedestrian improvements, like perimeter sidewalks and additional site lighting. We included a new entry from the northwest corner of the property and added landscape improvements. So that work was done last year. Oh, and also, there was a crosswalk placed on Innovation Drive. This map shows the, um, the proposed scope of work for phases three and four. All the items kind of highlighted in blue and green are the phases three and four. This is the map we showed you when we presented it to council in workshop. This phase includes two open-air pavilions, two shade umbrellas similar to the one that we put in phase one, a misting station with adjacent shade trellis and seating, a retractable awning on the amphitheater building, outdoor fitness station with the overhead shade sail, additional seating, benches and arbor swings, plus electrical upgrades for events, to accommodate events, and then additional landscape and irrigation. Some of those features, these were the same images we presented at the town council workshop back in twenty-four. The left image is an example of the, the two pavilions we're including in this scope of work. They're twenty-four by thirty-four. The bottom center image is the shade sail over the fitness center, or the fitness station, and the image on the right bottom is the misting feature. It's made by Vortex, includes kind of lighting, so it's kind of a sculptural piece that will be in the park. And then the top center is, is the pre-engineered trellises go around the perimeter of the misting station. Fitness equipment, we're upgraded, using upgraded fitness equipment in this particular application. It's all in one location with a shade sail over top, but this uses resistant to get your, your physical exercise. We're anxious to see how this all works. It looks, it looks like it's well-made equipment, and we're excited to see it.
This, if I don't mind, if you don't mind, this is all outdoor?
Yes.
Made for outdoor?
Yes.
Made to be wet?
Not a lot of parts and pieces, but it's, it uses resistance, resistance. And it's going to be underneath the shade sail, and it's going to be in a circular arrangement around the shade sail.
I was just saying, I think these are similar in nature to the ones that we have out at Oscar Fraser that are around that walking trail as well to make sure that they're durable and outdoor. Yes, sir.
And those are all there? Yes, sir. Can you go back to the trellis, please?
The what?
Trellis. Trellis. Is that covered on the top?
It's, it's got horizontal and, it has horizontal members to provide shade beneath it. It's not covered with a fabric or anything type like that, no.
So would, if it rained, would water get on the seat, on the seats?
Yes, you would. You would get wet underneath that, yes. Are you talking about the trellis itself? Yes. It's more for a shade feature, for people sitting around the misting station watching their children. It'd be an area for that, so. Won't be used quite as much when it's raining, I guess. As far as procurement, we bid this project according to the town's purchasing ordinance. We posted an invitation for bid, and then reviewed the bids for lowest price, qualified, responsive, and responsible offers. And the last two criteria are kind of critical in this particular bid, in that responsive and, uh, and responsible and responsive were important features to criteria for this particular bid. We received two bids, one from Hilton Head Landscape and one from Charter Vista. Hilton Head Landscape was really the only bidder that provided a complete and responsive bid. Charter Vista, they were missed, they only included one page of a partial unit price schedule. They didn't bid everything. They did not include licenses, they didn't include verification of their references or a bid bond. So it really wasn't a qualified bid, so we had to throw that particular bid out. So staff is requesting town council authorize a town manager to execute a contract with Hilton Head Landscape for nine hundred and seventy-four thousand eighty-seven hundred and seventy-seven cents. We are asking for a ten percent contingency on this particular project to, to cover any unforeseen kind of changes that may arise during construction. So the total fiscal impact is one million seventy-one thousand four hundred ninety-six and fifty-four cents. And that's all within the existing budget we have for this particular project. So the next steps, if you approve, is to go ahead and submit the contract for signatures and initiate a pre-construction meeting. Then we, at that meeting, we issue a notice to proceed, and we intend to start this project almost immediately, in this month yet, and it's for a hundred and fifty-eight, fifty-day duration. So we, we hope to see it completed, you know, early, or late spring, early, early summer. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those or provide further clarification. Otherwise, there is a proposed motion in your packet for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Rooney, Ms. Fraser?
No, the only question I had, Pat placing that last slide on the timeline of starting completion, so I suggest, yeah, for a five-month time period.
Yeah, it will, it will shut the park down for a period of time, so we won't have any events out there till this, this spring or summer.
Thank you, I'm done.
Any question, Mr. Wood? Mr. Hamilton? Ms. Burden? So would someone like to make a moving or motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Go ahead, Bridget.
I make a motion to approve authorizing the town manager into a contract with Hilton Head Landscape for construction of the Buckwalter Place Park, phases three and four, in the amount of one million seventy-one thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents, which includes a ten percent contingency.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. That's unanimous, Marsha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pat.
Don't come back again this year.
Up next, we have consideration of public art, of public art committee recommendation to award a public art commission, award a public art commission at New Riverside Barn Park to Michael McLaughlin with a physical impact of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Mr. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you'll recall, again, the public art policy was approved in 2022 by you all, council. We've been working on that through the Public Art Committee. In October this year, we brought a recommendation for New Riverside. At the time, uh, there was four council present, and it was a split vote. Some of the feedback that was given to us was concerns around, around the cost. We were asked to go back to the recommended artist and see what he could work on us with. But just a reminder, you know, while we're doing this, again, you all approved the policy for us to work on, and we're trying to build a diverse collection of public art to address the cultural resources within town, expand those resources, and promote a community quality of life, civic pride, attracting visitors, increasing foot traffic, all those things that come along with, with public art. The location that was identified for this call for art was New Riverside Barn Park. It was open to interpretation, although we were kind of steering artists towards complimenting the natural landscape. No size parameters were given at the time. There was a budget that was given of a not to exceed of sixty-five thousand. Some of the progress we've made so far, here's a recap of some of the things that we've, we've, uh, implemented already. Obviously, the wrap of the Bluffton Breeze, we did the equipment box at the splash pad, and of course, the Bluffton Pearl at the Welcome Center. A criteria for selection is outlined in the policy, and that is these items right here. A good emphasis is put on the quality and the durability of the art. The idea is that we procure something of quality that can withstand the elements and lasts us for, for decades if possible. So the, the focus has always been on putting out art that is very durable quality, has quality fabrication, and the maintenance are reasonable for us to maintain at, on our staff. The recommended artist was Michael McLaughlin. He proposed a art piece titled Rabbit and Wren. You see the sketch to the left there. To the right is a, an example of one of his art pieces in another state. When we went back to him to talk about the price, he offered us some solutions, reduced costs by seven thousand dollars. It would reduce the, the height of that piece from six to five feet, and he's also is going to take on more of the work himself rather than contracting some engineers to work with him, so that also he's, he's eating that cost essentially. So reducing costs overall by seven thousand dollars to fifty-eight thousand dollars, and his estimated timeline is twelve months. Do you have any questions?
Questions from council, Ms. Fraser?
Yes, I do have a few questions, Chris. For those who may not be familiar of, um, the pack that we have and implemented, if you could, please tell us what the funding source of our public arts commission is.
Yeah, so when the policy was established, we set up a designated fund within the general fund, but annually, as part of the budget process, we identify all the items that the general fund supports that are, can support tourism. So we identify hospitality tax funds that can be transferred into general fund to reduce the overall liability of those efforts that we put on, in the general fund that support tourism and attraction in, in our residence.
And do any of those funds come from the ATAC appropriation for cultural?
Uh, there is a small portion of local ATAC, state ATAC is through the, the committee. Most of the local is towards capital projects, and again, we do fund this out of the CIP. I don't identify any local ATAC that was specific to this particular piece, though.
Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Wood?
I, I have a question indirectly related. So years ago, we became, and I know this is outside the cultural district. Years ago, the town took on the title from the state of cultural district. We had a whole lot more artists and everything in the old town area back then, and obviously over time, we're starting, for whatever reason, that is starting to phase out a little bit through economic reasons more than anything, real estate, prices are high and everything. The only thing, I haven't read that in a long time when it came out, but hypothetically, the cultural district, not this piece, I get where it's at. Does it encompass artwork along with artists being general artists, as well as, like you have the May River Theater that puts on plays and stuff? Does it encompass all of these issues?
It does, yes. We have to identify not only public art, but also privately art within the district, as well as businesses that, that their core mission is art-related, theaters, everything that can be encompassed within that, that umbrella are identified and mapped out within the district, and then we have to identify a strategic plan for the district on helping to promote the district to attract visitors.
And that's not easily granted to any?
No.
Municipality?
No, I think there's six or seven in total in the state.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, questions?
Last time we had this, my concern was the cost of the artwork. It seemed like it was, there's a seven thousand dollars, uh, reduction, but we're also getting a reduction in product.
Size of, yeah, size of the piece, yeah.
So are we really getting a reduction?
Yeah, we are. I mean, a lot, most of the cost related to the piece is the, the materials. It's, it's a bronze statue essentially, and there's a patina that he puts on it to color it. So reducing the size will, will reduce the cost. It's outlined, I don't have it in the presentation, but in your package, it's line item, which, where it's coming from. There's like a few thousand from materials, and there's a few thousand from labor that, of an individual, he's no longer going to pay for it. He's going to do it himself.
That's it. Ms. Burden?
I would like to just go back up, go back to some of Councilwoman Fraser's questions. So you said that this is funded out of the general fund, but that hospitality tax, does it, does, that you move over to?
Yeah, so it's part of the budget process every year. There's a lot of different things that the general fund supports that's tourism-related or event-related, and we identify those costs to maximize how much we can move hospitality funds, funds into general fund to support that.
And just for clarification, hospitality funds are hotel night, nightly hotel stays in... and?
Outside of prepared foods, accommodations taxes.
Okay, thank you. So prepared foods, so at the, when you go to restaurant, that little bit?
That's what I got.
It's my understanding from asking lots of questions, too, it does seem like a lot of money, but after witnessing the pearl at, at the Squire Pope Cottage, it was like, wow, you know? So all those things do, and, and the ATACs can only be used for certain things, but this is directly tied to tourism.
Yeah.
People won't want to hear about that, want to see it. That's all. I've already questioned everything in the past, so I'll just ask to see if there's anything else anybody wants to say. If not, would someone make a motion to or not to?
I make a motion to approve the Public Arts Committee recommendation to award the Public Art Commission at New Riverside Barn Park to Michael McLaughlin with a fiscal impact of fifty-eight thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Yeah.
Three, two. Ms. Marsha? Thank you, Mr. Chris. All right, number five, so a consideration of an ordinance to amend the town of Bluffton's municipal code of ordinances, Chapter twenty-three Unified Development Ordinance, Article Five, Design Standards, Section five point one, five point eight accessory buildings, new and section five point one, five point five, A, E, maximum lot coverage, new. Mr. Kevin?
What all I just read there, but? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we are here for the, the proposed edits to the Unified Development Ordinance, as you'd stated. So just to give you some brief background, this request initially was requested by a property owner in the historic district who had built a carport without receiving the proper permits. So a couple other things to remind you is that prior to 2011, we classified carports that they were at, they were, in essence, were carriage houses. So we were, we had some concerns that we were, we had some ambiguity as to what we would classify carriage houses for. So this has come in front of you a couple times, just most recently, this was in front of Planning Commission at their, at the October twenty-second meeting, where they made a motion to approve the, the, the documentation, except for the maximum lot coverage. I'm going to go into that information here in just a second, but, so we had multiple workshops, both in October and November of, of last year, and then April, August, and September of this year, before it went to Planning Commission. And we worked, I think we worked pretty diligently on pulling some of this information together. So when this got in front of Planning Commission, initially, as you guys remember, we had had some questions about the, the size of the carports that we were interested in having. Initial conversations were set at six hundred square foot, in essence, which is a, it's, you know, like that would be a twenty by thirty or, you know, is that right? Yeah, twenty by thirty carport. Some of the other items we had in here, we're dealing with, you know, how are we going to, how are these going to be designed? You know, could they be attached or detached? You know, it's not uncommon to have attached carports. Some of the concerns we had was the placement of it, so being placed behind the front plane of the principal structure. We wanted to make sure that the character was the same, so we had questions about the pitch of the roof, which, and here we have it set at a minimum of a four-twelve pitch roof. We talked about the enclosures, not having like solid walls, but rather having like a loubered panels, and only two of the sides of the carport, our carport could be enclosed. A couple of other ones was the roof. The height of it was, we said it that it's no taller than the principal structure, or eighteen feet, whichever is left, less, and the concern was if you have a boat, to make sure they have ample clearance in order for your boat to get in there. So what you see in front of you, we, obviously, the red line version is what, what had gone through Planning Commission and ultimately approved, or recommended approved on this section. And here's just a, it's just broken down specifically to, to what we had just discussed. The next section was dealing with the lot coverage. The Planning Commission, as you remember, we, we brought forward this information to you with the concerns to make sure that site properties weren't like overcovered, which would then cause impacts on stormwater infiltration, which, if you were to design a site, you can still design a site that has impervious area and pervious areas. So like right now, a driveway, depending if it's a concrete driveway, well, that's an, that is an impervious area. But if you designed your driveway that was gravel, that had filtration into, designed into it, then that wouldn't count towards meeting your maximum lot coverage. So one of the, one of the questions, as the Planning Commission had, had discussed, and one of the reasons that they had, I guess, they decided to recommend not including this. But I wanted to say that staff we used, we have a table already in the Unified Development Ordinance that talks about maximum lot coverage, and it's for the properties that are located outside of the historic district. So what we did is we cross-referenced the, the table of the lot standards for those properties outside the historic district, based off of what would be the, the building type standards. That's how we came up with that maximum percentage. So that's, that was the reason that we had that in here. Again, while Planning Commission made a recommendation, that was their recommendation to not include it, staff is proposing that we keep this amount in here. So a couple of the review criteria, I met all the review criteria that we had. We are here at first reading, and again, from that staff, staff's recommendation is, you know, we do agree with the text, the text portion of it, but we would recommend that sections A through E, that the, this would be the, the, the building type dimensions, that that section would be included, which is five fifteen, five A through E. So A, it's each of the zoning districts is, is how we have that classified. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Start with Ms. Burden?
I do have a couple of questions and comments, and I'd like to come back to that maximum lot coverage, but just want to make a couple other comments first. I know that we've workshop this a couple times, and you've gone to Planning Commission and HPC, so I don't want to make too many more changes, but I do, I think that Planning Commission changed it back down to four hundred from six hundred. I personally think the six hundred is more appropriate. I measured my husband's and my cars, and we would absolutely not fit in a four hundred square foot carport, and so I think six hundred is more appropriate. And then something else I just want to ask about is, one requirement was for it to be behind the primary structure.
Correct.
So I think on some lots, it seems like there's quite a few where it seems that it being on the side of it would be more appropriate than behind. Would that be allowed?
If, if that's something that you'd like, what we could do is, we could adjust the language to say that if it is attached, that, that it would be allowed.
If it's attached to the house?
Yes. I, I mean, I think that would be a good, a good recommendation. Again, the intent is to make sure that, that the principal structure is, is the focal point.
Right.
And not necessarily a carriage house, or a garage, or, or a carport. So that was our intent of having that, having that pushed back from there.
Okay. I, when I was driving around town, I saw numerous lots where I thought it wouldn't fit in the back of the house for different reasons, and that it would have to go on the side, so I just thought I'd bring that up, just, I don't want to create something that then we're going to have to do constant variances for. And then one more question is, will this be approved at the staff level, assuming that it does meet the guidelines, or will it have to go through HPC?
Our intent is that if this would be approved, that they would, they would request a site feature permit, and that is a staff level. So they would go through the, and that's typically a, maybe a three-day turnaround of just, once they actually submit the application for us to review it, and then give, provide that approval. From there, they would then be required to get a building permit. So the first step is site feature, second step would be building permit.
Okay, I think that's a great idea, just to?
Yes.
Help staff and HPC. And some, so some, I want to go back to that maximum lot coverage, and why, go over one more time, why you're proposing to keep it, even though Planning Commission, and to be honest, I feel like y'all's intents are this, or intentions are the same, which is to keep more pervious surface than not. Am I?
Correct.
That's your intent by keeping it in there?
Yes.
And when I went back and watched the Planning Commission, it seemed like they didn't necessarily have an issue with the maximum lot coverage percentage being in there, but more of the percentage, the number. Again, I think the goals were the same, but I don't know if maybe when we go back through the Old Town Master Plan over in the next twelve to eighteen months, if we could review the percentage put in here to make sure that it is appropriate, that we are not allowing overbuilding where we could actually allow for more stormwater and runoff issues. I think that's all I have for now.
And I have an example here I wanted to provide, maybe it'd be beneficial. So here's an example of a lot that's on Lawrence Street, Lawrence and DeBeau's, recently constructed within the past, maybe three or four years. It's in the neighborhood general historic district. The lot itself is four thousand nine hundred and seventy, forty-seven square feet, when you include the house, the carriage house, the driveway, and the sidewalk, which are all impervious structures or features. That totals fifty-eight percentage, so fifty-eight percent of the lot is covered with an impervious surface. So based off of that additional building type, which allows a maximum of lot coverage, there still would be some room to where they could have, they could have some type of impervious structures on the property. However, based off of just the sheer configuration of this lot, it's impossible for this, this property to have a, a carport on it. Another example is, this is a property over in the Stock Farm area, and while it's a much larger lot, you can see at a sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight square feet, they only have thirty percent impervious area that is shown. So they, they would have ample space in order to provide a carport on there. I, I think the visual kind of helps to, to give us the perspective as to what we're, what we're looking at.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
Mr. Hamilton?
When we require the carport to be in the back of the, the existing or dwelling, do they have to have a different driveway to, to access the carport?
Well, it, it depends on, on how the lot is configured right now. So it, it truly depends on how they have to.
What, what is, go back to your building types again, I think. What is the bottom one, additional building type? What, what do they mean?
It's kind of like a, I don't want to use, I'm using the term a catch-all, so to speak, where you might have components of certain building types, but it doesn't meet the exact configuration of that one building type. So it, it gives us an opportunity to where, you know, someone talked about the uniformality of, of buildings, it does provide that little bit of uniqueness that people could do in a building type that they wanted. So we had to have some type of provisions in place, so that way, you know, if, if you're, you kind of get lumped into that last one, that's where, that's where we'll, we classify those additional building types.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, can I follow up on a question that Council Hamilton had? Kevin, just to help clarify, when, what is the minimum requirement to, is it required to have a driveway if you put a carport in?
I, I'm not sure.
Like, can you just drive across your grass, or do you actually have to make an improvement if you put a carport in?
It doesn't necessarily say that, so.
That's what I was trying to get to, is if somebody wanted to put a carport in, there's, there's not a requirement that you have to gravel or put pavers or anything like that in to the yard with the carport, correct?
Your, your only requirement are the, the two required, you know, off-street parking spaces per, per unit, so that's typically your driveway. But let's say you wanted to put a carport in the, in the back, and you didn't want to extend your driveway, but you just drive over your grass, you can do that right now if you wanted to.
Say if you just wanted to park your golf cart and lawnmower underneath there, you wouldn't have to be?
Yes.
I just want to.
You'll have to formalize it.
That, that's where I just wanted to follow up with your question, Councilman Hamilton, is just, there's no requirement to extend or add anything else to make more impervious or whatever, to put a driveway in, if you want to do a carport? It's, it's up to the option whether you want to or not.
Mr. Ham, Mr., what's your name? Dan, Mr. Wood?
Barney.
Barney.
Barney. Thank you for that.
So I'm good with the six hundred foot, as suggested by Ms. Burden, and I think that was originally staff's direction, his proposal. I think the impervious question is paramount, to keep that, the percentages you have for maximum, maximum lot coverage. I mean, we're spending a lot of money to protect wetlands and studies and impervious services, if rendered as problems, and so I think that's a healthy thing to leave. The only other question I would have is on the aesthetic side. I know Council asked this question previously during a workshop or whatever. I, I understand the sidewalls that we can do, but what are the aesthetics on the roofing side of it? Can it be a canvas tarp or a blue tarp? Does it have to be something more permanent, if it's in with the Old Town look and master plan? What is it?
So I think that's why, bullet number four, where it says must have the same general character as the primary structure, we didn't want to be so specific on a specific material for the roof, that we left it as the general character. So that could be anything from, you know, the, the five V crimp metal roofing that we have, we see on a lot of houses. You could have architectural shingles. There could be, you know, there, you might have terracotta, like, I mean, there's, there's different possibilities that are out there for roofing materials that you could use. We didn't want to specifically say it, but just generalize it towards the primary structure. That way, you're not, you're not doing some crazy off-the-wall type of thing that is not, that's not in character of the, the entire area. I left it very, we left it vague to be able to give us the ability to not pigeonhole someone into exactly what it's going to look like.
Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Dan, or Kevin. Still has to meet the requirements of, of hurricane?
Yes.
Of course, the same, so it, it can't be.
That's a good point.
Yes.
You know, so whatever material it is, and it's my understanding that we, there is no regulation on color.
No, sir.
So you can't say it's got to match the color of the roof.
So, I mean.
That solves my problem. See what I mean?
Yeah, that's great, great point.
Ms. Frazier, anything from?
Yeah, I have a question, Kevin, but also on this subject, I think it's going to be good for us, too, to look at not just making sure that we always have a way to have coverage of like pervious surfaces, but knowing that we look at to our problems aren't just the surface matter, but also in the lack of foliage sometimes that's taken away when we do add in pervious surfaces. But my question is stemming from what Councilwoman Burden asked. I think if going from the six hundred to the four hundred is going to create an issue that would place existing structures in a non-conforming status for those who have either already built to that standard, or would create a problem of those who need to build to that standard, I think we should go with whatever is going to reduce the amount of people that would have to get variances, or what would be the less problematic process for staff. And the point that she raised seemed to be one that many might find themselves in, in terms of not being able to fit the vehicles that they currently have into that, if that sole purpose of the carport, being able to give residents that option. I would look to see like what the, the better option is going to be, in what the rest of Council feels, whether it fits six hundred. I think we should change the language of that.
Clarify what you just said, six?
Right now, the maximum is four hundred square feet.
Right.
But as she was saying, when they, she measured her own personal vehicles, they don't fit, and I'm sure that many people would probably have a similarity to that.
Right.
Let's maybe float the motion with, instead of the four hundred, as a six hundred and see how the vote goes.
That's, well, that's what I was, on my notes, that's one thing that I was going to make a point to.
And if you don't mind, can I go back to one of your, your concerns dealing with the non-conformity? I think that, so obviously, by, by increasing up to that six hundred percent, that will, that will help a lot of individuals that may have existing carports, if they were to go to. a lot of individuals that may have existing carports, if they were to go to, well, if they were just repairing them, they can do that with no problem. There's no issues with that. But if they, if it was like substantially, you know, destroyed and they wanted to rebuild, hopefully that 600 is very similar to what they would have right now. They might have something actually smaller. So that would definitely give more leeway than what the 400-square-foot would.
And that would be my thought, you know, in the event that we have some disaster, and let's say carports are damaged, I think it'd be easier for a lot more people to be able to rebuild, you know, if it wasn't as much of an issue as that 400 that does limit.
Correct.
May I ask a question just going off of that, but let's say there was a hurricane in some of them that are currently existing, were destroyed, like some of the metal ones that we've seen around town, they would not be able to put that, what they, like the metal structure back in, am I correct?
Well, if they meet the requirements that we have here, it might not be the exact same, but they could meet the general character.
Based on that footprint?
Yes. Yeah. I know you're getting to the one-and-a-half-inch metal piped type carports that are.
I think, yeah, some, I think in prior presentations that you've shown throughout town, and I'm just curious, because I think, you know, some of those people, it could be a hardship to then have to build up to this next one.
Well, they're going to have to follow the code of current codes anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if they're damaged, you know, from a non-conformity standpoint, if they're damaged less than 50%, you know, they can make the repairs. But if it goes beyond that, then they definitely have to follow whatever the new requirements were.
Thank you.
Like, if you had a bent pole, then you'd be able to go in and repair that same type of bent pole to put it back into place.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I just got a couple of comments. You know, the footprint. That doesn't mean that you have to build it 20 by 30, you could build it 10 by 60, if that's what your lot demands. You know, which 10-foot wide would be enough for a car, but it wouldn't be enough for a boat. And the rules about the, if it's possible, putting it behind the house, but if you're, I'm thinking boats, you know, that's my livelihood, so you can't back a boat around the corner and get it straight and go into the garage. We've allowed some of our homes that are built in the very close proximity of here, that if you drive a pickup truck, you can't get in the garage, because you come straight in, then you have to make a hard turn, and there's just not enough room without backing into your neighbor's house. And I know y'all have seen what I'm talking about. No, I get it. So no need to create a rule like that, that's going to just not make any sense. Mayor, before you go further to help him, so where he's got characteristics based on what you just said, so what you're really, I think you're reading that, they would scratch out placement in rear of lot and just basically go with the 20 feet behind the front plane? Is that right?
That would be more sensible.
You can't pull a trailer about the trailer.
Most of the lots.
Yeah, you know, I think.
At an angle like that, you're going to have to come straight in.
Just to get to an aerial, that's probably, that's not a good example. But if, you know, if your driveway was the length of, you know, the side right here, then you'd be able to back to straight in. So it would be pushed further back, not necessarily turned to the side.
Right, push straight back, that's fine.
Right.
But, yeah, you know, the regulation of having to go in the back, there's, a lot of people don't have enough room to do that.
Yeah, and it's difficult for us to, to, you know, there's a what-if for every possible scenario.
Right.
If I may, if the, if kind of the consensus is the concern of the placement in the rear of the lot, you know, one thing is we could adjust this, this language to read that if it was, you know, attached, you know, it could be attached to the side of a house, but would not be allowed to go in front of that front plane. So that would be one option. And then if it is, if it is detached, that it would then need to be placed back, and you can, you can go with 20 feet, you can go with 10 feet. I think the intent, our intent is to just kind of, if it's separated, that it's.
Would we have to word something like, as far back as possible is feasible, because every lot, everything is going to be.
Everyone's. So the option is, it must be behind the front plane of the house?
We can't, we can't, we can't fix every scenario that's not even out there yet. You can't. So if you buy a house that has small side yards, don't buy a boat.
Is that why you don't have a boat?
That's why.
So can I ask another question, Mayor? So.
Help me with the language. Where it says placement in rear of lot, or at a minimum of 20 feet behind the front plane, you have two choices. If you decided you wanted to try to build it in the back of the lot, you could, right? If you can make the radius. Or you don't have to build it there, all town staff is asking, just shift it back 20 feet, so it's not the predominant feature over the house. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and if I could, maybe, maybe what the wording would be, placement in the rear of the lot, or behind the front plane of the principal structure.
Right, right.
So we would strike through at a minimum of 20 feet in that section right there.
Right.
So.
But the word "or" stays.
Correct. So if I may, based off of the discussions, what I'm hearing so far, so where it says maximum footprint on the screen here, we would say 600, that's what you're going with. Bullet Number Three would say placement in the rear of lot, or behind the front plane of the principal structure.
Sounds good.
Okay? And then we also have the lot coverage, maximum lot coverage information.
And the height, Kevin, are we going with 18 feet?
Yes, sir, again.
To exceed the height of the house.
Correct.
That's all in there, good.
Yes, sir.
And Kevin, back to where you just said, or behind the front plane of the principal structure, you still need a footage, because you could be one foot behind the principal structure. Or an inch. Or an inch.
Well, but that's just it. I mean, I think, and you tell me, if you would like to just have it to where, you know, you can have it, you can have it flush with the front plane, you could have it five feet. I think the intent is that if you're attaching it to the side of the house, that it would, it would be, in essence, kind of flush with the front. The pitch of that roof would be flush with it.
I think anyone that's putting up something like this would want to put it back. I would think so. You know, and not, you know, even with the front of their house, because you're going to, if you have space to go back, you're not going to be able to access it once you build a structure. You might as well put the structure back there, so you can access your driveway, basically, or part of your front yard. I don't.
I don't think anybody would want to.
Put it in front of the, you know.
We definitely don't want it in front of the.
No.
But you also have to remember that it's, it is open air, so it's not a, you know, hopefully they're not, well, they might, if they have a side load, they could potentially have the louvered panels on the side. But again, what-if scenarios, I mean, we could.
Well, that's why we're, you know, this is new, so we're going to have to.
Yeah, always. So we're adjusting the 600 square feet, and then Bullet Number Three, removing the, at a minimum of 20 feet. And I believe everything else was, everything else it seemed was.
Yes.
Kevin, you had mentioned a number of times a possible attachment of the carport to the house.
Yes.
Do you think that we need to add something like that in there in these characteristics?
We have that. Bullet Number One, it says a detached or an attached accessory structure, and I believe by us removing that at a minimum 20 feet behind the front plane, that actually then gives them that ability to have it at the front plane of the house, on the side of the house.
All right, so by attached there, that's what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
To the house?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions from council? Not, is there someone that would like to make the motion?
Make the motion, Mayor, is referenced on the screen for the carports.
With, with. Okay, thank you. With the proposed changes.
He's going to have to make the motion with the proposed changes, unless they're corrected.
Oh, yeah, with the square footage and stuff, yeah. You putting it together, or?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can write it on here if you like.
Make it, add it on there and make it easier.
Sorry.
Just as a reminder, you can say, I make a motion to approve with conditions as stated on the screen. You don't have to read all of that if you don't want to.
All right, Kevin, did you?
I think so.
Who to approve with the conditions as shown on the screen? Is there a second?
Second.
One discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
That was a aye? I didn't hear you.
That's unanimous.
All right, one last item, I would just like to say, I do have my son, Eli Ikerd, he's in the audience, he's part of the junior leadership course, so he's, he gets to see, he gets to see his dad in action tonight, so.
You should have given him a harder time than we did, but.
That's why I didn't say anything on the front end.
Christmas.
Because I didn't want you to do that, so.
Well, it got you, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Little birdie had already told me, so I didn't.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to consent agenda items. I think there's something that we need to pull off of here. Who wants to make that?
Yes, sir, Mayor, if we can have somebody, we need to pull off the approval of the quarterly workshops. We've had a couple edits that we've had to make since the agenda was published. As we were going through the quarterly workshops, there's a couple conflicts, and we wanted to make sure that we adopted those with the corrected dates.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Did somebody like to pull those?
I make a motion to pull consent agenda item number five for a vote.
Second. Is that all we need to do? I need to approve one through four. Yeah. So is that good enough, the motion that she made?
To remove it, yes, sir.
Consent agenda, that's all she's doing.
Yeah, you just need to.
So that's all we have to vote on?
No, no, sir, then you'll need to vote to.
To approve the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so is there a second on hers? I did second hers.
All in favor, that?
Aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Now we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's, with the deletion of that one.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous, and is there a motion to go into executive session?
Hang on a second, we need, we need to approve the quarterly, the item number five with the amendment for the workshop, the amended workshop that is in front of council, the workshop agenda.
Do I have it?
Yeah.
Yeah? You make the motion. So on item number five, consent agenda, I make the motion to change the proposed dates, January 20th to January 27th, 2026, October to 20th to October the 27th, 2026.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Now, is there a motion? We go into executive session for legal advice pertaining to an appeal of a decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission pursuant to South Carolina Freedom of Information Act 30-4-70. And discussions relating to proposed land acquisition in the area of the Buck, within the Buckwalter PUD pursuant to South Carolina Freedom of Information Act 34-70. Discussion relating to proposed contractual matters regarding lease agreements for town-owned property at 97 Progressive Street pursuant to South Carolina Freedom of Information Act 30-4-70. Legal advice pertaining to the consideration of condemnation of property in support of Pritchard Street, in support of Pritchard Street for light pole placement pursuant to Freedom of Information Act 30-4-70.
Is there a motion?
I need a motion to go into executive session.
We, there's a second.
Second. Second.
We are in.
Action now. Adam. Let Adam read this motion. Here you got the motion. No, him is pregnant.
Tracy, I tried but Paul State too.
I don't, I just, I don't think so.
It was all Paul State too.
Oh, good call. That is our point Tracy.
She told me when I went in there, Liam.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Would anybody like to make the motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion. This was regarding, this is regarding number four, right? On the executive session?
Four.
So, the motion is for item four, executive session. I move that we authorize staff and town attorney to move forward with attempting to obtain an easement in support of the Pritchard Street light pole placement project and if an easement is not agreed then to proceed with condemnation to pay a fair and
Reasonable.
reasonable price for the easement.
Any discussion?
Mr. Ferguson say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Mr. Garcia, is this your
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.